Over whether we receive those dollars or not. Additionally, I will tell you that for us, an average caseload for us is actually fifty youth per case manager, and we'll talk a little bit about case management in a minute. So to have three and a half staff really was not great in that there was honestly some waste there, right? As a nonprofit, we owe it to our donors, whether that be city partners, whether that be corporations, or businesses, or individual gifters, to be lean, to be mean, to be efficient, and to be effective in reaching our mission. We were tremendously overstaffed and inefficient, and that did not exist just within Leavenworth. That really existed throughout the state. By the way, I may mention that I'm a pretty direct and open and transparent person.
That's okay.
So I'm just gonna claim all of the things, all of the mistakes from the past, and I'm gonna say we use those really to learn from them. The other thing that was really interesting is that we used to say, again, as a part of that numbers game, we'll serve any kid. So we would go into a community like up in northeast Kansas with a population of less than ten thousand and say, hey, we're serving five hundred kids here, and mayor, you should enroll your kids in our program because they just seem to be a part. And then it would turn out that all of these quote-unquote "youth" that we were serving, we're not being served in one-to-one mentorship. So they would maybe get together once a week after school, and you'd have a few high schoolers who would play a game with them. That is not one-to-one mentorship. So we stopped, and we said, look, we have a cash flow problem, we have a program problem because our outcomes did not exist in any kind of way that reflected how much money we were pouring into this program. You would not run your city that way, you would not run your businesses that way, and again, we owe more to our constituents than to do it that poorly. So we took a step back and we said, alright, first of all, how do we stop mission drift and get back to who we are? This organization was founded nearly a hundred and thirty years ago in New York, in the city of New York. And it was founded by a former judge and a law clerk who during those days saw that there were young men who were lost, and they wound up appearing before the magistrate, and they were doing awful things like, oh, stealing food because they had no adults in their lives. And that is the root of how Big Brothers at that point came into existence. So we took a look and we said, look, there are organizations out there that do primary youth development really, really well. What is primary youth development? It's after-school programs. It is a safe place to be, right? Typically, they learn a lot about peer-to-peer interaction and primary youth development. And we said, why are we trying to be all things to all people? That is not who we need to be when there are others who do that. So we said, we are no longer going to do primary development. The one thing I want you to remember about primary youth, actually two things, is primary youth mixes all youth together, and it's actually quite awesome. I love, love, love our primary youth development partners. But you'll have a kid that comes from a home household making fifteen thousand in total combined income, and you'll have youth there who whose families are making a hundred thousand in combined household income, right? It's all things for all kids, and we celebrate them, we thank them, and we partner with them. But it is not who we are as an organization. So, we said, forget primary, there are others who are doing it and doing it well. That is not the purpose of one-to-one, because the second thing I want you to remember about primary development is that that is typically what I would say is higher vol- or, um, higher volume, lower cost. You can hire a college student at, you know, fifteen dollars an hour, it's probably actually less than that, to come in and to oversee a group of fifteen kids for an hour and a half after school, right? That is not the same as our program. Secondary youth development is where we began, and what that simply means is that these are kids who have multiple factors of adversity. Now, what do I mean by that? There's an internationally recognized score that is called the Adverse Childhood Experience Score. In this nation, twelve percent of our nation's youth has a score of four or higher. We actually celebrate that at Kansas Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the average ACEs score of the youth we intake is five. It's five. And we do that very purposefully because our cost for our program, frankly, is a higher cost because we are one hundred percent case management, and I'll get to that in just a minute. But technically, typically, we're a little lower volume. Now, I would have people like Jeff Jack who go, well, actually, in our communities, we're kinda kicking butt when it comes to the number of youth we're serving. And I say, thank you to our, our local area directors for making that happen, and quite frankly, their community leadership councils, which Jeff will speak about. The third area in which we serve is tertiary youth development. On any given year, thirteen to sixteen percent of the youth we serve fall into this category. What does that mean? There are youth that made a dumb mistake. They may have gotten caught underage drinking at a party that was busted. They may have smoked pot and gotten caught. And you know what? I have a message for all of you. Their lives are not lost. Their lives are not lost. And so we have further interventions with them and partnerships that we create within the communities. We do not need to be the be-all, end-all, because quite typically, there are all sorts of organizations that we can partner and work with to really help provide wraparound services. So that is our tertiary youth development. High-level tertiary is an area that we do not serve, and so I want you to think about extreme violent or sex offender youth. We do not serve those, just not because they are a loss cause, but because we would not have the first clue. That is not our area of expertise. And trust me when I say, we have plenty of youth to serve in the secondary and tertiary youth development. So there's that. So, how did we streamline our processes? Well, first of all, we started taking a look and saying, who are we gonna serve? How are we gonna serve them? And again, we are one-to-one, one adult, or one adult couple, or one family matched with one youth. Again, these are kids that really need that one-to-one engagement. And we do that, and within the first year, just to give you an idea of a new match, we take six hours of our case manager's time to do an intake process on the youth and family. It's on average, six hours to intake a volunteer, not of the volunteers' time, but of all other processing that has to be done by our case managers. Then every single month for the first year, the youth, the big, or the mentor, as well as the parent or guardian, has a, has a one-to-one contact with our case manager. That is critical for safety, for quality, and for outcomes. Now, there may be some sitting in this room that say, well, a background check, just run a background check, right? What about the safety issue? Background check will catch it, fingerprinting will catch it. And what I mean to tell you is that statistically, ninety-five percent of child sexual predators pass a background check because they simply have not been caught yet. Our case managers, who are all college-educated, are very gifted and trained at looking for safety, for quality, and for outcomes. So if you could put yourself in the shoes of a parent in our program, the number of things you want for your children is, first, do no harm. And that case manager, we call the match support specialists, because case manager or social worker sounds very scary to a lot of the kids we serve, are that first line of defense, of safety, quality, and outcomes. Then, we actually shifted our entire model. It used to be that, gosh, in every community in which we existed, didn't matter how small or how large, they had people who were performing what we now call a shared service model. So where our headquarters is located, out of Wichita, we have finance experts, HR experts, IT experts, marketing, program training, compliance, grant writers, and all of our administration that work out of that location, but are oftentimes in the very communities like Jeff serves, right? But we found that when we did that, we were saving over a million dollars annually, so that those positions, even on a contractual basis, did not have to be duplicated throughout our other communities. It also means that, let's say that we did move forward with this program here, and you had someone who was going gangbusters in, in making new matches and, and doing a great job in the case management, but then they needed to go on maternity. We could bring in any program person from anywhere else in the state, because there is that consistency in training throughout the whole state. So on the who we are, we've covered that. Who we serve, you can see some of those statistics on the right, but I do wanna just briefly touch on, and Brandon will get to this, but a couple of the statistics that I really like to share on our outcomes. And again, independent research, so don't rely on us to say it, look at that independent research. Nearly half of former littles who are now adults say that their house, combined household income is greater than seventy-five thousand dollars, greater than that. Seventy-eight percent of our former youth now vote in elections. Over half hold leadership positions, whether that is within their company or within their community. The outcomes are absolutely significant. The last thing that I would just say is that, on a personal note, and I've asked these guys to share a little bit about why we work here, I was twelve and a half and in foster care, when a couples mentor began to mentor me and radically changed my life for the better. So when I speak about this program, I speak because there is certainly passion and understanding for how one person, or in my particular instance, a couple, changed the whole, everything in my life, and it's why I'm here today. So with that...
Thank you for sharing.
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you all for having us here today. I am Jeff Jack. I am the area director for northeast Kansas, based in Lawrence. Currently, we have matches that we serve in Douglas County and Franklin County. If we're fortunate enough to be coming to Leavenworth, I would be the area director for this area as well. And I always like to hear a little bit about someone who's talking to me, so I wanna just briefly share a little bit of my background with you, because I think some of it is relevant. I was an attorney. I guess I still am an attorney. We cover many... For sixteen years, I'm from southeast Kansas originally. I then spent three years in the legislature. I was also in the military for twenty years, in the Army Reserves and the Kansas National Guard, but probably most relevant, I'm a retired district court judge. I spent fourteen years as a judge in southeast Kansas, and during that time, I was responsible for all the child in need of care and juvenile cases, along with the other typical things that a judge will hear. So I saw firsthand what happens when kids don't have mentorship, what happens when they don't have that stable background, they don't have somebody who cares for them. I saw it every day. And because of that, I saw, and over that fourteen years, I started to see the cycle. You know, I would see the kids of people who had been in my court fourteen years earlier coming through. I saw Big Brothers, Big Sisters as a way to break that cycle. This is a prevention program. So sometimes you don't see the results right away. The results might come ten years down the road, twenty years down the road. I actually met a former little a couple of weeks ago, who was a little thirty years He came from a difficult background. He had a big, changed his life. He's now forty years old, and he's a fifth-grade teacher. And that totally changed everything for him. And so breaks those cycles, breaks that cycle of poverty. Poverty of opportunity, poverty of money, poverty of, of expectations. So that's what I, that's why I got involved with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I was fortunate growing up. I had two parents, I had a stable family. I didn't have the high ACEs score myself, but I saw what, what the result is when kids don't have that kind of support. So I was on a local community leadership council down in southeast Kansas for fourteen years. During that time, I was also a big brother myself. I've had three littles of my own that I've seen from approximately fifth grade up until they graduated from my school. And my, the last one that I had should be graduating next year, so, you know, it's, you see that progress, but it's long-term progress. It's not day-to-day. I mentioned that I was on the local community leadership council because, as Mary was describing how Big Brothers, Big Sisters used to be, I was on the local council when it was like that. And there was some skepticism when we changed, because people were afraid, well, we're gonna lose the local control over this program. The truth is, we really didn't have any control over the program to start with. The money was coming from other places. The cost, because you are trying to do the IT and the human resources and all that, it just, it doesn't work very well. So I learned over time, and I've learned even more, having gone to work for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, that you get the economies of scale with shared services that you don't have if all these areas are independent. You have the added professionalism, and you have that support. If I have a question, we have a difficult situation come up, I know that I can call Wichita headquarters, share that information. We're not on an island out here by ourselves. So I, as an area director, that's really important to me, to have that, that background. So I retired from the bench three, a little over three years ago, and went to work for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, because I believe so much in this program. Now, if or when we're fortunate enough to come to Leavenworth, how would we do it? And that's what I'd like to talk to you about, is how would we actually implement this? Well, to create this program here or anywhere, these are the foundational stages that are gonna be required to have a successful program, because this is intended for a long term. We are not coming in, we don't wanna come in for a quick fix. We're not gonna promise you that we can come in and just flip a switch and everything's gonna work great. You have to do the hard work of building a program. First step is establish an active CLC, and I'm gonna talk about each of these in a little bit more detail. Step two is to build a relationship with your school system. Step three is to recruit and enroll big volunteers, and then finally, we start really getting into making the matches. So, what do I mean by a CLC? That's a community leadership council. That is the local support, and that is crucial to the success of a Big Brothers, Big Sisters program, because it's the community's program. It's not our program. It is owned by the community. Six to eight members is really a minimum, in my opinion. If you don't have that many people, you don't have, you really don't have the community support if you, if you can't get them. And the key to that is that they have to be active members. We're not looking for people to just put something on their resume that, well, I was on the board of Big Brothers, Big Sisters. We need people who really believe in this program and wanna go out and help us make this happen. What does a CLC member do? Well, they help us with recruitment, they help with fundraising, and they also open doors into the community. You know, I've only been to Leavenworth myself a few times. I came into Lawrence as the, as the area director. I'd gone to law school there, but I hadn't lived there for years and years and years. So having an active CLC makes those introductions, builds those relationships that you have to have. So what do you do after you get that CLC established? Well, then you, you work with the schools. You cannot, it can't just be from the bottom up. You can't just have the teachers that want to do this, and it can't just be from the top down. It can't just be the administration imposing this. It really has to permeate the entire school system. Everybody has to support this to make it work. You need buy-in from the administrators, from the teachers, from the school counselors, social workers, and from the parents. Once they understand the value of mentorship for their kids, and that's understood in the school, we can do great things together. So then you've, you've got the buy-in from the schools, that's, we start talking about recruitment and enrollment of bigs, 'cause you have to have volunteers to serve these kids. You don't wanna just have a whole bunch of kids sign up and then wait, and get excited about being matched with a mentor. And I'll tell you, it, as an adult, sometimes we don't realize how exciting that is for a kid, to be told that you're gonna have a big brother or a big sister, who you're gonna go do things with, that's gonna talk to you, be there for you. It is amazing to see those kids and how excited they are to be matched. And so we don't want a whole bunch of kids waiting around, so we've got to hit the ground running with recruiting. Sometimes it's hard to see the cost of that. You kinda think of that as a hidden cost, 'cause it's hard to quantify recruiting. You know, it's kinda like sales. You know, you're out there, you're making those calls, you're trying to get people involved. But we're in the relationship business, and so really, what it is, is building relationships in the community, and we rely on the CLC members to help us do that. You know, I could go out and just get a phone book and start going down the businesses in, in town, and calling them up and saying, hey, can I come talk to you about our program? And you're not gonna get very much results. But if I've got a CLC member who maybe sold a car to this guy, you know, has a business, or their kids went to school together, or they go to church together, and he says, hey, I'm involved with this program, would you mind talking to this guy? He says he's from Lawrence, he wants to come in here and talk to you about presenting this for, for our kids. Lot better success. So it's really important to have that CLC support. So we've got the CLC built, we've got the schools on board, we've got the support in the community of recruiting, it's time to start establishing matches. Timing of doing that, how you do that, is, is critical. You have to have all those steps in place, whether you walked in here today with half a million dollars and said, we wanna put this program into place, or if you have zero, you still are gonna have to go through those steps to have a long-term, successful program. Our philosophy has always been that funding will follow program growth. If we're out there making matches and the community sees that, they're gonna want to support us with donations, and we'll have events and things, but we've gotta have those If we just came in with our current staff that we have in, in Lawrence, an estimate, and this is just a rough estimate, because it's hard to know for sure, we would probably, to, to have a goal of ten new matches here, probably need about twenty-five thousand dollars a year to do that, because we estimate it takes about nineteen thou- fifteen to nineteen thousand dollars per match.
Nineteen hundred.
I'm sorry, nineteen hundred. I'm sorry, thank you. As you recall, Mary was...
That's platinum.
Yeah, that's a really good match. As, as, as you recall, Mary was, Mary was talking about all the match support. And if you think about a caseload of fifty, and that match support specialist is talking to the parent, they're talking to the big, and they're talking to the little, once a month, every month, that's a hundred and fifty contacts that they're gonna, that one person's gonna have to have. That's just match support for those new matches. That doesn't talk about all the time in recruiting, fundraising, administrative, all the other things that a match support specialist has to do. So that's what, when Mary says that we are a little more expensive, but we are intensive, that's what we're doing. It's that case-managed support that people get. So that's an estimate of what we think it would cost, nineteen hundred dollars per match. If we were to be able to just walk in and ideally say, eh, we're gonna hire somebody here locally to do this, well, first, we would have to train someone, so there's gonna be a little bit of a time lag there. But that also then gives us a chance to get a CLC built, to make those contacts with the schools, to get in and start doing that recruiting, start building the, the name awareness in the community, so people know we're here. Probably sixty, I, sixty's probably the low end on that, but sixty, seventy thousand maybe. As again, that's an estimate of what it would be if you were able to just hire somebody to come in and do this full-time. We think that we would primarily be site-based matches at first, and Mary didn't really talk about this, but we really have two, two types of programs. We have site-based, which is when, it's usually at a school, or an after-school or before-school program, where the volunteer, the big, comes in and meets with their little once a week. Maybe they have lunch at school, maybe they come help them with some reading, or some homework, or something. I've done that with my littles when I, when I started off the site-based. That's why you need that school support to, to help you do that. Probably would start with that, because those then often lead into community-based matches. And community-based is kind of a traditional, what people think of as Big Brothers, Big Sisters, where the big and the little can get together, they go to the park and have a catch, or they, you know, go to the grocery store and do shopping, or they... I taught my, one of my littles how to swim, you know, or taught him how to play baseball. He'd never thrown a ball or caught a ball, and I took him out and taught him how to do that. Took him to a ballgame, go to a movie, those kind of things, that's community-based. And a lot of times, the site-based matches will lead into that.
Having said that, if we did come here and you had twenty bigs who said, we wanna do community-based, you're gonna have community-based quickly, right? I mean, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. If we've got that kind of support, and that's why I say that the timing is important. If you've got people who are ready to jump in...
He's one. He already volunteered.
Very good. I will let you know, I was sharing this with the mayor before we started. Since January first, we have already, in Lawrence, we've already gotten three requests from parents in Leavenworth County to have their kids enrolled in our program. And that's before we've even come here.
And, and we've said nothing to no one, so, yeah.
That's just natural, people want to have something like this for their kids. So the more support we have, the more volunteers we have, the sooner we can reach those steps. So thank you for your time, and, and I'm also happy to, to answer questions.
And then the less infamous Brandon Russell will present, and then after that, we're gonna assume that you have lots of questions for us, and we're glad to answer them.
Thanks for having us. My name is Brandon Russell. I've worked for Big Brothers, Big Sisters as the, as the COO for Kansas now for nine years. This is all very comfortable to me, because for the twenty-two years before that, I worked in local government. I was, I was emergency services, primarily in EMS. So I am tickled to death that tonight I get to land my pitch and just walk out. That'll be new for me, and that's fun, so...
Yeah, I didn't mention I was an assistant city attorney for a lot of those years too, so I was sent through a few...
Anyway, I, so I did have a very long career, and it was in emergency services, and that is directly related to why I now work for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, because as Mary mentioned, we, we're not here to serve just all the kids, right? The average ACEs score of five, these, these kids are going through some tough stuff, right? And that was me before. I knew all these kids before, but I was handling them after they'd overdosed, or after they'd been shot, or after they'd been beaten, or whatever that was. And I was at the point in my life, it was time to get in front of that. I was done with being reactive to that and get proactive to try to solve that problem. And so that, that's why I'm here. And it's, it is a pleasure to be able to serve those same kids from a completely different perspective. So for my part, I've just got a few, a few things for you to reinforce for you that this isn't just a, we, we aren't just coming in to say, and we take on the cuff kids and we do good. We actually, we actually really do measure that, and not only locally or at the state level, but the national level. Big Brothers, Big Sisters of America is the, is the, the central coordination point for all of the affiliates in the country, of which there are over two hundred. We are a federation model, so each affiliate has its own 501(c)(3), but because we can leverage affiliates from all across the country, we can do national-level, high-participant, longitudinal, peer-reviewed studies about our outcomes. And we, as a federation, have been doing that now for more than forty years. So the numbers that have been presented to you throughout the presentation, you've had a, a preview of, that show the outcomes of this program are beneficial and are solid, are absolutely based in long-term research. Our most recent national-level study just wrapped up last year, but that means we need another three to five years to compare samples, you know, sample group to control group and, and see how those outcomes are. Preliminary reports from that already are, are sharing with us the same information we knew before. So kids that are in this program benefit from it greatly. In Kansas, we, we take that a step further. We're one of the only affiliates that does the assessment that we've mentioned a few times, where we, we do a full assessment of a kid that is very much like ACEs score. We visit the home, we visit with the family, we learn everything there is to know about them, so that we can understand that risk level. That's part of the slow burn and the slow start when we come into a community, because we have to have partners. Because quite frankly, not every kid that comes to us is going to benefit from the full-on one-to-one mentoring ship, interventive program like ours. And so it's sometimes best to find them either services at the primary level, like Mary talked about earlier, through partner nonprofits or other agencies in the area, or if it's tertiary level, you know, kids, that's not necessarily kids with violent crimes or things, but kids maybe that have a more severe level of autism than we're able to serve through our volunteers. Our goal is that after we've been for, in a community for a while, no kid that ever reached out, out to us is left with nothing. Our goal is that after we've been for in a community for a while, no kid that ever reached out out to us is left with nothing. We want, if we can't serve them, we want to refer them or get them the support that they need in some other way. Um, so that's all, that's all part of our assessment and our outcomes, we want to make sure we can do that. For kids both front and and back, so that's what the assessment, our intake assessments are about. Then annually, uh, every kid in our program, family with parent guardian um, participation. Uh, we participate in numerous studies, all of that data rolls up at the national level as well. So we can all see how we're doing uh, across affiliates or as a whole or just Kansas. Um, the, there's, we love acronyms, by the way. We excel at acronyms and so um, youth outcome studies or child outcome studies is uh, what those are strength of relationship. Those are all different surveys that are conducted annually. Um, many times are not many times, all the time, our our case managers will be onsite with the family to do those in person. Um, and so we can make sure that we're doing the best we can to get the best survey data possible. Um, if there's anyone in here that is a a survey or data geek. Uh, you can point now and say, oh, you're just getting that information from them, that's true, many of our, much of our data is self reported. Uh, by the participants in our program, that is not a weakness, um, it's actually really scary. And so when we talk about the levels of abuse, be it emotional, physical, sexual abuse that happens to our kids. The the amount of drug use or addiction that's present in the home, whatever factor you want to hear about. That we then say, well, these kids have an average ACEs score of five, which means it's pretty severe. Remember, there's an element of that that's self reported. So take all of those numbers times about one and a half and we're getting to the truth of the matter. Um, and so the the depth of the challenges. Within the families that we serve um, can be frightening, but that's exactly why we're here and that's exactly what we do. And we know from all those years of studies that our model can work uh, to help with that. The last one we put up there is that we're not just um, analytical with the program overall. We have fun with the kids in our program too, and it's not just about hanging out with your mentor. The the way that I love to explain that is that kids who are in those situations. Having a mentor is allowing them to see their tomorrow today. This is the first time they have dinner at a at a dining room table. It's the first time they get to go fishing, it's the first time they get to go hiking. And they begin to realize that they can be more. And they can see more than just the home they're in or the neighborhood they're in or whatever that is. Um, and it's a, it's a profound life changing experience for them, which is why we like to brag about it. But along for the ride, every kid every year does their whoop. And they first of all love the name that it's whoop, now cuz that's just fun to say, but it's. It's wish, outcome, obstacle and plan, and and the mentor works through that with them. What is your wish, what's something that you would, that you would like to have better? And and believe it or not, kids wishes are are amazing and these aren't, I want to be an astronaut. It's uh, I want to be able to talk in class and not be scared. I want to be able to talk to my teacher and not be scared, right? And so uh, we can absolutely make that outcome happen for them and and just face head on through that mentor. Whatever the obstacle is, um, and that can be as simple as just. Social anxiety or they don't have friends or they're scared of the way they say their S's. But we'll, we'll help them every step of the way, right, and that's what a whoop is. So it's a, we we focus a lot on what is warm and feely about it, we we don't get as fully transparent about how scary it can be. But every step of the way, uh, we're gathering data because we want to assure that we are absolutely serving these kids correctly. We slow burn it, we come into the community like that because the the hard truth about that is that. If we come in and provide matches for kids and then that doesn't get community support and we have to leave again. For these kids, adults coming into their life and promising them something and then leaving is their normal. And we will absolutely never do that to one of these kids, so. We'll take how much time it takes to get it right for the kids in Leavenworth. To make sure that we're here and that we stay and that we become the mentors and adults that are there for them throughout their childhood.
I too welcome your questions.
Man, I just want to say thank you all for your presentation. Man, we believe in investing in our youth and powering our youth and creating opportunities for our youth. And I truly believe this is a great opportunity that's being presented before us. Uh, and at this time, I want to open it up to the commission to ask questions.
I have some questions, uh, what is the ages that you serve?
The 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 classic ages that we serve uh, is five to eighteen.
Okay.
Um, the, we, I will go ahead and share with you the sneak preview because we like giving sneak previews that. Um, we have figured out actually uh, through exhaustive study. That eighteen year olds are not quite ready to take on the world, believe it or not. And so uh, we'll be piloting a program, the first in the country this fall. That is more of a coaches mentees kind of a program for kids that is more focused on career readiness. Um, or school readiness where we're enrolling youth ages eighteen to twenty five.
And right now, um, even before we pilot that, we actually uh, do an extension, so if you're eighteen years old. But you were enrolled in our program prior to the age of eighteen, we will serve you through the age of twenty five. As long as the youth and the mentor agrees, so, but we're really excited about this pilot, surprise Jeff.
I just happened to be talking with one of our match support specialists today about our longest match in Douglas County. Uh, they've been matched for over ten years, it's I think about twelve years now. But we're gonna have to close the match because the little is now twenty two years old and has become a teacher. So talk about a success story, and she is.
We accept that closure.
A successful closure, they will be friends for the rest of their lives. The match will be closed, we won't be serving them that way. But they have now built that relationship that will last them forever.
It it is interesting because really all state services for youth ends. At age eighteen or upon high school graduation. And yet the the madness of it all is they don't wake up one second after they turn eighteen. Or as soon as they get off that graduation stage, if indeed, they're one of three. Um, Kansas kids who actually do graduate or the of the seventy five percent. And go, oh, I've got it all figured out now, I know exactly what I'm going to do. And I've had excellent role models and been surrounded by a wonderful village, right? So that's why we are pirating.
I was gonna say, could, you know, at eighteen, that's uh, even probably more scarier, you know?
Yes.
Okay, I'm an adult, now now what I do, you know, someone was always there for me, so that's great that you've extended that age.
And you would be such a great guide in that, yes, so, um, but but I I I think it's it's going to be really rather significant. Um, for Kansas Big Brothers Big Sisters, we have a separate vision statement, um, just because we're really cool like that as Kansans. Um, from the rest of the country and our vision statement is that all youth we serve have a living wage job by age twenty five. And we feel like this will take us a long way down that road. We also as Kansans and as communities have to stop asking ourselves, why do all of our kids keep leaving the state, right? We know that when we help youth develop this little thing called community attachment. That it makes a significant difference in whether they stay, whether they leave or whether they leave and come back. And so um, when you think of Big Brothers Big Sisters, it is far greater than just. An adult being really nice to a kid and hanging out, right? We've got to look at it from an economic perspective, we have to look at it through a community growth and sustainability perspective. What are all of those pieces that really help our youth become the next us here? That was a long answer, I'm so sorry.
Real quick, um, is, I know you service different cities in Kansas, of course, they're all different populations. It, can you give me an average amount of kids that uh, you serve or is there a?
Yeah, so right now we have, uh, we use a hub model, right, um, meaning that. An area director is located in a hub city that then serves surrounding areas, like like that's why Jeff here is here. Um, and our current hub cities where we where we have programs located are um, Hayes, Dodge City, Wichita. There's a, there's a weird little donut of counties around Wichita where we have several offices that's a little decentralized. Uh, Newton, Hudson, Winfield, um, then Manhattan, Topeka, Lawrence, Pittsburgh and Emporia. Is currently where we serve out of, many of those have comparable um, size populations to Leavenworth. Uh, you guys are probably a little bit on the larger side to some of those. Uh, average anywhere, so we've served just over eighteen hundred kids um, last year. And anywhere so like a a haze, which is relatively comparable, two hundred and fifty to three hundred kids. Um, it it depends a lot on the, on the needs of the community though, you know? Um, we have, we have Wichita is surrounded by very affluent suburbs. And that's just not where we belong, you know, and so. Um, there's some places where maybe it's too small or maybe it's the, there's not a lot of need there for kids. So we try and find that perfect middle ground and if we were here for, you know, five to ten years, you could count on. Probably average population of kids would fall into our service population being somewhere between a hundred and fifty and. Two hundred and fifteen, but you guys know Leavenworth better than we do.
Hutchinson, Kansas has a population that is almost three thousand larger than Leavenworth. And our hutch program last year served seventy eight youth in one to one mentoring. Of which most of them were actually community based. And so they are growing very quickly, which is really exciting to see. Yeah, but it it took them a while to get that traction, right? So I just want to keep going back to what Jeff said. Um, we we want to under promise and hopefully over deliver. But we always want to be really practical and what we don't want to do is do the whole Music Man River City nonsense, right? We're, we're just gonna be very direct and open with with you all about what is possible, what is probable, what is likely. And um, what what can be achieved.
Thank you.
Where's the band?
Probably saying that.
No, I did not. Okay, we know five to eighteen, soon to be twenty five if necessary, as they want. What about the uh, the bigs? What ages are they?
That is a hot topic, thanks for bringing that up. Jeff's getting a full preview of the area director meeting tomorrow before he's actually. There is a, there is a point when we decided that it's a good idea to add eighteen to twenty five as new enrollees, not just extended enrollees, right? Um, we suddenly encountered a bit of a conundrum because currently what the policy says is that you have to be at least eighteen to be a big, right? And so we're saying, these kids still need help and their mentors. Uh, right now, that's how it exists, but the reason it can exist like that is because of our screening process, right? And for site based matches, if you have a kid that's nineteen, twenty, twenty one, that's in college. Um, that's an outstanding match because their school years match up precisely. And so in a site based match, we don't, we don't have to worry about the summer months because the kid's out of school and the big's out of school. And you can actually make a really good match for that. And uh, we have to recognize us folks that maybe have a little less hair. Have to realize that it's actually pretty cool to have the the local football star from the college or whatever come into cafeteria and. And hang out with you than it is to have the old guy, right? And so there is a a place and a space for bigs that are younger. And then there is absolutely a place and a space for for people that are older or further into their career. And that's exactly why our intake process is pretty thorough, cuz we want to find the best fit match for every kid.
Okay, so there's no maximum age?
No, absolutely not.
In fact, I'll share this with you, our longest lasting matches. And now I'm a big, they they love me as I went in with my walker, our longest, our longest, I love that, thank you. Thank you, our longest um, lasting matches actually and some of our best matches are with career adults. Um, who are forty and older and our oldest big that we have right now is eighty eight years old. Eighty eight.
I was gonna say if you knew.
And and for a lot of our kids who literally have are have missed a great sense of what family is. For them to be able to have someone who mirrors like what a a grandparent is, or in this case like a great, great, great grandparent. It's cool, it is cool because they have the time and they have the experience to really spend time with our kids. So one of the age populations that I love the very most is forty and older, quite frankly, especially for the community based, just love them.
In in Lawrence, one of our good partners is the Senior Resource Center. Because that they're bringing, you know, retired folks in from all over uh, to come in for their programming. It's a great thing that for people who want to give back to the community, want to give back to the next generation. Um, so it's. It's amazing how many empty nesters we get who say, well, my kids have all gone. I'm not sure what I want to do, now's my chance to do this, I've thought about doing this for a while, now I have the time.
Yeah.
What about uh, the kids who are, no, I don't want to do this, they're very resistant to it.
Then they won't, we we want, we need the kids to buy in, there's, there's no forcing. And so it has to be with the youth's permission and the parents' permission and then the approval within our intake. Because if if a kid is resistant, what's the point, right? I mean, I have a twenty six and twenty seven year old kids and. They have a mind of their own, now, what's interesting is that we have seen in the past where there are kids who are resistant. And then they have a friend who gets matched and they hear about it or they witness it and they go. Oh, well, okay, yeah, I'm interested in getting matched. Yeah.
And there are some kids that are like very shy, withdrawn, they're not actually resistant, they just are not used to dealing with.
Or they're unsure, yeah.
And that might take a little longer, but our match support specialists are trained and. But again, if the if the kid doesn't want the match, it's a relationship and you don't force somebody into a relationship.
And and that's why it's, I mean, the program is is the basis, right? But you don't sell the youth on the program, you sell them on the relationship. In a world before COVID, there was all the technology, then COVID happened and there was so much isolation. Our youth today are struggling more so than ever before with so much isolation and being withdrawn. And it is going to take them time to even figure out what, for many of those youth, what human connection really actually feels like. And yet when they experience it, they crave it, they want it, they learn from it and it is life changing. What else you got, Ed?
The, yeah, we have a interesting little tangent story about that, uh, is that, and I don't. We want to, you know, we want to make it happy and and a good presentation for you, but there's a real kind of rough element to all this too, you know, and. A really good example I can give you of that, about how the relationship for kids form, that may at first not be. Resistant, they don't storm out and say no, but they maybe wonder what this is all about. Over the course of the development of that relationship, there's about uh, maybe once, twice a month. Uh, we arrive at a point where we actually have like a crisis call. And and I have a team of people that we lead that through, that means we're handling an emergency involving a little in real time. And the reason why we have to go first and then collateral contact, police, whoever we need to. Is because the person in their life they trust the most is their big. And that can be a a slip up of whoops, I was at a party and I had some to drink and I don't know what to do, so I'm gonna call my big, you know? Um, all the way up to unfortunately, um, we have interrupted abductions, we have interrupted rapes. We have interrupted sex trafficking in progress. Because the person who they reached out to at that critical moment was their big. So we have to make sure we have processes in place to conduit that over to the proper law enforcement or whatever authorities. That's how much that trust grows over time. It can be, it can be scary for them at first, but that relationship, we're in the relationship business and they learn to trust that at all, a lot.
Thank you, there's another thing we didn't really touch on in the presentation, but I think it's important in what we do. At least in in my area, this, we do this, I'm sure we do it statewide. And that is, you know, our match support specialists are case managers. But they're not just talking to the to the youth, they're not just talking to the kid. It's usually an entire family and if the family's not part of that relationship, it it doesn't work. And so one of the things we really work hard on is making sure our match support specialists. Are plugged into the entire community and all the other social service agencies that are out there, all the other resources that are out there. Because they know those families and if this family needs a new, their washer and dryer broke down. And they need, and they, but they have no job or they they can't afford a new one, well, where can you go to get something like that? Or they're gonna lose their house or, you know, they're having a job problem. Our case managers, our match support specialists are usually some of the first people to know that. And they can help them find those resources, so. You know, they're they're, it's a relationship with the kids and the bigs, but it's really the entire family that they help.
Yeah, thank you, any questions?
Yes, sir, uh, well, I think you guys did a great job of laying everything out and providing a good foundation. You answered a lot of questions that kind of I think came up throughout, um. So one thing that you hit on a little bit was kind of the the program outcomes. And I didn't see a lot of those numbers up there or anything like that, you spoke to a couple of them, I would love to see more of that. Um, if you could, you know, sometime here send them over to.
I, did I send those over to one of the two of you? I'm glad to resend it as well, okay. I should, I should have just dropped it into the presentation, my apologies.
No, no, that's okay, I mean, it's, you know, I appreciated the the feedback and, you know, want to kind of know just what that return on investment is.
Sure.
Uh, Wilson and I have talked back and forth on, you know, these types of programs and, you know, my biggest thing is I just want to know what. And, you know, my biggest thing is I just want to know what we're getting out of it. And it's, there's a lot of programs out there, and it can make you feel good and are warm and fuzzy. I just want to know what we're getting out of it, you know, what's this gonna mean? You you started speaking of some numbers, which was awesome.
Yes.
And so I'd love to be able to see that and know that it's impactful. One question I've got is kind of the, throughout the course of the program, whether that's, you know, three years, ten years, twenty, whatever, what does the follow-up look like for the city, you know, ongoing? And what's the engagement, if you could speak to that?
The, so, follow-up for the city, say say a little bit more, so I understand your question.
How's the program coming along? What are some of the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got you. That's a topical number. On our, on our drive up, I told Mary, I said, well, this is really interesting. Because we we've never started into a new community here. We've never started with a city before. That's that's typically a community engagement or, you know, social services partner or something like that. And so I I told Mary, because remember, I said, I'm familiar with this room. So I said, if this is where it's gonna start, and if we get started in Leavenworth, and that's where it starts, then we've got to make sure that that Jeff, at least, if not us, are at least coming back quarterly or as often as we can to stand at that city council. Because I know how they are, and when's the next election? So I was already going all the way down every, every road, you know, that I could think of, because we've just never started with a with a municipal government before. It's exciting, it's fun, but we absolutely will will be here to share with you those updates when or how often you want to see.
We are, we are very accustomed, quite frankly, based upon grant funding, whether that be private, whether it be UW, United Way, sorry acronym, or federal, to providing updates, whether that's monthly, whether it's quarterly, annually. So I think the question is, how often would you all like that? And would you like it in person? Would you like it in a report format? Would you like both? I mean, we're, we're, Jeff is, Jeff is really easy to work with. He knows the way, for sure, so...
Well, and and if it's, you know, if if we would like to do something like this, and if it's a success, and and it's building on that, obviously creating more awareness is a a big piece of that. So, you know, yeah, and I I love the career readiness piece that you're piloting. I think that is a much-needed area that's gonna probably fill a big void, a big gap that continues to develop in the workforce, you know, today. So that's kind of cool for you guys also. But yeah, that's really my my biggest thing, if we can get some of the more outcomes piece. And I would just ask about, you know, if we were to move forward with, you know, the the program and everything, that we just couple together kind of the accountability piece, you know, from the side to know, you know, what's going on. And there's various different things that have been started over the years or that, you know, happen here in the city. And it, we we see how things can degrade if there's not the accountability piece.
Absolutely.
I think it's important to remember, in thinking about that though, if we're talking about accountability for what happens in Leavenworth, this is a long-term project. So we can be accountable for things like, how many matches are we making? What are the length of those matches? How many are we closing? Those kind of things.
From a quality assurance, you know, standpoint, you know, I'm definitely a quality over, you know, quantity type person, so...
Yeah, the, how many kids are gonna vote, we're not gonna know that for a long time.
Right, right.
Exactly.
And and I think that, again, going back to Jeff's point, that we are not like a a food bank where, okay, a family is hungry tonight, come here and you get food, right? It is long-term. But absolutely, we we have a really just incredible board of directors who live, eat, live, breathe on ROI and on outcomes. And so I think you would actually be pleased with the things we measure, how we measure it, how frequently we measure it. When Brandon began this job, he had long, flowing hair. It is now all gone. It went out the window. Mine's still black, Jeff, technically. But anyway, so, you know, we we have a really fantastic board of directors that is made up of business-minded people who insist on those things. And we would expect nothing less of ourselves than that accountability and reporting. Absolutely.
Our long, long, long-term goal for career readiness and that kind of thing is for people to know our outcomes, know our programs, build in internships, job readiness things, and so that we can get to the point someday in five, eight, ten years, where there's signs parked out in front that say, we have littles, because they know the outcome of our programs is great. So, partner up, ten years from now, we can have one of those parked in front of City Hall. You guys will get some great new people in all your departments, right?
We actually, we actually, last year, piloted in Q4. I don't know why we pilot everything in Q4. We piloted a life skills guide. It began as a curriculum, but everyone said that word might scare bigs. But the essence of it, so we changed it to guide, is that every quarter, we focus on a a particular topic because our our teachers are overwhelmed with so many other issues that the things that that we learned in school have gone by the wayside, right? There there's just not enough time, not enough teacher bodies. And so being able to do that, so the focus this quarter is on healthy habits. And so for the continuum, that could really fit in any age group, all the way through age twenty-five, bigs receive that quarterly information, they hang it on their fridge or their file cabinet, what have you. And it's conversation starters to say, this is our topic for the quarter. So when you're having that burger with your little, or you go to that school to visit with your little, what are your conversation starters? And then we build match activities around it as staff involving community partners. So if in one quarter it's on financial literacy, we're gonna say, all right, what bank in town would be really great to come in and and put together a fun activity to really teach financial literacy? So much so that someday, to Brandon's point, we hope that it means something when someone says, I graduated from the Big Brothers Big Sisters program. You're getting someone as an employer who has soft skills, who knows to show up for work on time or call in if they can't make it, who knows how to look you in the eye when they're talking to you as an employer, who knows the importance of customer service, all of those pieces.
Man, just want to say thank you all for this presentation. Thank you for taking time out of your day, traveling from Wichita to come and present to the commission. And we'll follow up with staff, and we'll be in contact, and we'll make sure everyone get those outcome numbers as well. So thank you all, appreciate it. Have a good week.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you want to take five, let the next group set out?
Yes.
Yep.
A project update, Fourth Street K seven between Choctaw and Seneca presentation.
Turn this over to our Public Works Director, Brian Faust.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This evening, our design consultant, BHC, is here to provide an update on the Fourth Street project between Choctaw and Seneca and to answer any questions that you may have. The design of the improvements are virtually complete. Final check plans were submitted to KDOT and the city for review. Comments were provided back and our design consultant is in the process of incorporating those updates into the plans. The project was initially scheduled to bid this March, but has been pushed back to June. The main reasons for pushing it back to June are to ensure we have time to acquire the rights of way that we need and also for utility relocation, which if you're out on Fourth Street, you can see that they're doing that right now, and to incorporate changes in the plans based on subsurface work that is required. While landscaping is not included with this phase of the project, the plan is to incorporate landscaping under a separate contract once the roadwork is complete. This evening's presentation from BHC includes updated cost estimates that includes both storm and sanitary sewer replacements that were not included in the original scope of the project, an overview of the improvements, some of the project challenges that we have, and an updated schedule based on our June letting. Presenting tonight is David Swelling from BHC.
All right, thanks, Brian. As you can see on your, on the screen up there, the original length of this project was just two blocks from Choctaw to Delaware, and that was authorized by KDOT in September of 2020. So that project grew to four blocks, so basically from Choctaw to Seneca. And we're actually going a little bit, a little bit south of Choctaw and a little bit north of Seneca to really to basically fully capture both or all five of those intersections. And so this, this four-block length was, was scoped in November of 2021. And so it was originally focused on just the street and sidewalk and didn't really count for any, any replacing of the, the underground infrastructure. So what infrastructure was added? Okay, just for the, the storm sewer, you had about 2,400 feet of storm sewer from pipes that range 18 to 66 inches, and then also 44 storm structures. That's a curb inlet juncture box basically to handle all those, those pipes. In addition to that, you've got sanitary structures as well that are right next to there. And you can kind of see, this next slide, you'll be able to see the relationship of those storm and sanitary in the existing. We got about 1,400 feet of sanitary pipe and 11 sanitary manholes. Also added to this project are, are going to be new traffic signals that will have radar detection. So if you're waiting on the side street, it's right now, I think, believe they're all on, they're all on timers. So you're going to wait X amount of seconds, no matter what. It's just on a cycle. This, if you're waiting on the side street, they'll say, okay, there's nobody else coming. You're here, you can go, and then we'll let the traffic for Fourth Street go through again. It's also going to be, have some interconnect. That just means that those three traffic signals there are going to talk to each other. So you don't go 300 feet and then stop, and then go 300 feet and stop again. They're going to know on Fourth Street to kind of let you to go through. Also, if there's an emergency situation, that those vehicles can get through there more quickly. Also added some street, we're going to do some things with the street lighting as well as, as streetscaping. So to kind of further expand on the storm sewer, so what was there now and why are we messing with it? You can see the existing storm main line is, it's an arch culvert, which just means it has kind of has an arch shape, but it's made of brick and mortar. So you think of, you know, old timey stuff where they just put together some brick and slapped on some mortar. That's kind of how it is around the perimeter of that arch structure. So if you're trying to go in there to remove existing pipe connections or put new pipe connections in, you run the risk of just having that whole thing just kind of collapsing as around there as you make those connections. And it's, it's an aging infrastructure. So you, you wouldn't want to spend a lot of money and put it on a nice new roadway and sidewalk on top of that and later have to come back rip it up, especially considering how deep it is. It's about 20 feet deep and you can't, you can build a trench fairly deep, but it's not entirely safe. When you actually excavate all that out of there, it's going to get fairly wide. So you, you kind of only do that once as you, as you have the, the road detour around. Now is a great time to do that. And as you can see on there, if you look really closely, the existing arch culvert is directly above the sanitary sewer. In fact, there's some locations where one of the sanitary manholes came off and it's, it's directly beneath, it's directly beneath there. So try, if you're going to change out the storms, the storm sewer, doing the sanitary sewer at the same time makes a lot of sense. And actually, what we're going to do, what we're proposing, as you can see there, there's kind of an O-ring there. That's the proposed storm sewer. It's about 60 to 66 inches. So that's five to five and a half feet in diameter. And then off to the right there, you can see we're going to separate the, the sanity, the proposed sanitary sewer. So we'll have two separate access points and be better, better served that way. So, so for the traffic signals, kind of like I explained earlier, it's to kind of help improve traffic flow for the main line and the side streets and, and as well as the side streets and pedestrian and vehicular traffic. The streetlights, you're going to have better illumination throughout the downtown area, but still maintain some decorative qualities there that you see along Delaware. And then obviously the streetscaping, it's basically just enhance the aesthetic appeal to downtown. And so if you take a look here, talking about some of the different features, the traffic signal and streetlight, you can kind of see some ideas of what we're, we're planning down there. The image on the left, the tall skinny one there, that's what's at Delaware right now at the intersections. So at the intersection, there's a two, two-head luminaire, and then down the corridor of Delaware, there's just a single. But we're going to maintain that same, that same look. So you can see even at the, the three traffic signals, there's going to be a traffic signal pole in the southwest and northeast corners at Cherokee, Delaware, and Shawnee. So this structure here will be there with the, with, with the lights attached to the top of it to help illuminate that area. And those, those same luminaires are going to be at, at, at Choctaw and Seneca. In fact, we're taking the, the exact luminaires from Delaware, there's four of them, that look just like the one on the left, and moving them to the, to the north side of Choctaw and to the south side of Seneca to really match the, the theme that's going down there. And as we kind of talked about before, this is just the, there's other streetscaping that's going to happen. But with this project, they're going to be doing some colored stamped concrete in three different locations. You can kind of see the center turn lane median there and the image down there at the, at the bottom. And then also the crosswalks, it's not going to look exactly like the crosswalk there in the upper right, but there'll be some features of colored stamped concrete within the crosswalk. And then behind the curb, there's going to be kind of a maintenance edge about 18 inches wide that kind of continues that brick theme throughout the, the downtown and throughout this corridor. So some of the challenges, maybe if you guys kind of sneak peek into what's underneath the roadway. If any of you guys have ever been to Seattle, you know, they kind of raised that city a long time ago and there's some storefronts still down there. They do an underground tour, but you know, this is an opportunity here, Leavenworth could do their own underground tours for at least, at least this short stretch. They actually do have a storefront here and a walkway. So the picture on the right is in the northwest quadrant of Fourth and Delaware. And you can see there's at least about 90 feet of, 80 to 90 feet of walkway there. And on the left of that picture is that actual building face. And then it's about, about a four-foot walkway in between there. And then on the right, it almost kind of looks like that's maybe where the store, another store was, because off to the right there, that's going to be underneath the roadway. So the challenge here is, all right, we've got utilities on the top of that that are connected to the metal decking. Directly above that metal decking is the sidewalk. So if you're going to replace the sidewalk, you've got that metal decking, you've got utilities attached to it. So coordinating with utilities to, to get them to, to relocate. And then also, again, I mentioned to the right of that picture is the roadway. You're also going to be removing your storm and sanitary and have a pretty good size hole there. So trying to maintain that wall and have it stay in place is going to be kind of a challenge. So we've got some structural engineers taking a look at that to see. It's been done before. In fact, underneath, this is looking north-south. If, if that person would turn around and walk towards us and then turn to their right, they'd go, they would go underneath Delaware. So on the north side of Delaware, just west of Fourth Street, they redid an area just like this. So it's been done before, but it is kind of a challenge with the utilities and things like that. So that's one of the, the challenges. And the other locations, there's some coal shoots that are much smaller. Example, this may be about a, you know, five by 10 area that a smaller version of the metal decking and things will help cover that up and, and, and keep that in place. But on top of that, we're going to have some proposed sidewalk ramps. So the image there on, on the left is a northwest quadrant of Fourth and Shawnee. You can see they have steps going in, or a step going into their building. So we're proposing a ramp at that location to make it flush. So anybody going into their building, so it's, they're basically getting a, I wouldn't say free, but they're getting a, they're going to get an ADA ramp that goes into their, their building at both of those locations. I believe the one on the left is a bell tone. So they may have folks that, you know, may, may have some mobility issues trying to get in and out of their building. So they're going to actually put a ramp, we'll put a, a ramp there so it'll be flush with this, going into that building. And then also directly above this one here, we may be putting in a, a ramp as well at, at the northwest corner of Fourth and Delaware. There's, there's some pretty big steps going into that building as well. Lastly, there, the right-of-way easements, there are five locations where we're going to need to acquire right-of-way. They're pretty minimal areas, they're not big. They're just basically little, little wedges, because a lot of times at the intersections, you have the right-of-way coming to a corner, but you need a little bit of room of kind of a diagonal to get some width for people to, to turn the corner and go one direction. There's also drainage easement and also some temporary construction easements along the way, just five-foot temporary construction easement. So just trying to get those right-of-way and easements written and then getting them to a land acquisition agent and talking to the folks.
The only thing I'll add on this, one of the things that we experienced, I used to be with City Tiki, and we did, we did Kansas Avenue between Sixth and Kansas. And one of the things that happened when we reconstructed that road, we ended up having a lot of water issues in the basements of all the buildings along that route. But that's one of the things we challenged. David with is going to have done with the project, as you can see, coal shoots, underground storefronts. We disturbed the street, we disturbed the sidewalk. We want to make sure when we're done that we're not introducing a lot of water into these foundations of the structure. So that's one of the challenges that they've had to work with right off from the start, is making sure when we're done with the project, we haven't created conditions that are worse than they currently have.
There's a couple more slides here. You can kind of see the cost, the original construction cost for the two blocks was just under a million dollars. And there was a funding from KDOT totaling a million dollars that was given to that two-block project. Well, the project is now expanded to four blocks and it, it's really just kind of a two-times estimate really from what that, what the original scope was, where again, it was just mostly sidewalks, pavement, and, and kind of your basic, the top of your roadway. So the current costs around 4.2 million. That doesn't include inspection or landscaping. So the inspection is about 11% of that, so about $468,000. So the construction and inspection total is right around 4.7 million. If you add a 10% contingency, you're right around 5.2 million. Now, why did that all go up? You know, there's some, there's supply chain issues now and higher inflation rates. And obviously, the storm and sanitary increased that quite a bit to the tune of about, I want to say the storm was about one and a half to $2 million of that, and then sanitary was about three-quarters of a million, somewhere around there, in addition to all that social. So going from those numbers to where we are now, the storm and sanitary infrastructure improvements to replace the aging infrastructure underneath there was, was significant, but it's a lot better to do it now than try to rip up a brand-new road and put it in later if you have issues. And again, the landscaping easement, which is not included in there, is, is noted there about $768,000. And I think we talked about in January of last year, some of those improvements that are, that are going to be made for the, the landscape easements, our landscape and streetscaping. So what's the schedule look like? We're, we're addressing issue, or addressing some comments from KDOT right now, getting those incorporated into plans. I can know their plans that submitted them in, in March. It's really, we're basically 95% done with the plans. There's just some, some things that they see they want us to modify. Utilities must be relocated by early May. And then again, the final letting plan set, that's the kind of the final, final set that would go to KDOT in early May. Also, we do a public meeting more to kind of give people kind of an update of what's going on so they get a real feel for what this project is going to look like. And then advertise the project to the, the project to contractors in mid to late May. And then about a month from that time in June, determine who the winning contractor is. And then the city council will come back here and say, hey, this is the apparent little bidder, and have the city approve that contractor in probably August. And so from August to the 2024 start construction date or time, it's going to give us some time to catch up with some of those supply chain issues, to order and receive the traffic signal and pedestrian poles and equipment. A lot of times, those can have as much as a, an 11-month lead time from when you order them. So to be able to order those and then receive those and then, and then get those during construction in a timely manner, your schedule, your construction schedule is going to fall in place much better having ordered those, those early. Same thing with the storm structures and the sanitary sewer structures and reviewing shop drawings along the way. And, you know, City of Leavenworth is an, it's an older city. It's the first city in Kansas. So, you know, having some of those last-minute utility locations could be important to get some of those things out of the way so the construction flows smoothly.
How long does the, it says start construction 2024? Is there, is that, how long would it take?
I think some of that is going to be driven by when they can get their materials and what the contractor, when they, when they want to do things. I mean, there's, if, if the contractor deems they want to start, get going in, in February, they think they're going to get favorable weather, or it's whenever they feel comfortable. And it also depends on KDOT and depending on how much time they want to give that contractor. You know, a lot of times they'll have a, an early start date, a late start date. And so you have so many days to complete the project. That's kind of what would be what, what drives that. But we've, KDOT's been, been good working with us and so we can kind of help dictate some of those numbers with them. They do have some constraints in what they can and can't do, but that's.
We feel, we feel confident we did it in 2024.
Okay, that's, yeah, an estimate, yeah.
I did put an end construction down there, but yeah.
Just another question on these underground walkways. I mean, there's quite a few under Fourth Street, isn't there?
Yeah, so that was part of the thing that we wanted to do is to, to help identify where those locations are. So we have reached out to all of the, the property owners along the corridor and the city and the BHC staff have, have visited a lot of those sites just to kind of see what's underneath there. So on our plans, we've noted, hey, there's a coal shoot here. There's this, there's one location, there's a staircase that goes up to the roadway and, and they have a void space directly underneath the sidewalk. So having that metal decking and knowing what we're going to do to put in place to, to do that. So we, we feel that we've identified those locations to help for a smooth construction.
Fill them in or just, no, just make sure they're stable and secure with what's above?
And we've, we've talked to building owners and they ask, you know, is this something you want to keep? Is it something that you're good with going away? And, and like in this particular instance, the building owner would like to keep this. You also run a thing to say it's going to go away right now. It's a void. Tagging about your dirt in there, you put additional stress on the foundation of the structure. And so personally, I think it's good to leave those open.
Paul, can you speak more to the funding?
Sure.
Yep.
It's a good question. So I want to go back to the original cost of the project of two blocks of reconstruction for about 838,000, four blocks for about 1.6 million. We knew that that wasn't anything underground. That wasn't what the grant was. The grant was road construction. And so we knew that from the beginning that the infrastructure under Fourth Street, which handles all the flooding for downtown, sanitary, storm, not just the chunk line down the middle, but the service lines out to the businesses and down the side streets, were probably 100 years old and in some cases 20 feet deep. And so it wasn't really until we were able to get the ground penetrating radar into the properties, down into the storefronts to see what was under there. And so we started planning internally for that from the beginning, knowing that the roadway costs are pretty much what we anticipated, but the underground issues. So, so then where does the funding come from, I guess? So there, there's a number of sources. I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. In two weeks, we're going to do a presentation on a debt proposal that the city has to transition the way that we borrow money. And so we've looked at debt financing. Nothing that we have in mind to do this would require any kind of additional revenue to the city. So we have federal funds exchange dollars, which are federal transportation dollars. We have storm water dollars. We have sanitary sewer dollars. We have CIP dollars, countywide sales taxes growing. And so we do have funding, project funding available to present to the commission, a pay-as-you-go for the project or to pay-as-you-go with a combination of some minimal debt financing for this project. So it's, it's anticipated and something we've been working on. And following our debt presentation, we can give you some options and, and staff recommendation. Nothing has, this isn't a project that has gotten out of control because of aesthetic finishes or bells and whistles. This is strictly infrastructure underground. And I think what we also figured out, and he mentioned it here, is it's so deep that when we make these lateral repairs, if something collapses, it's 20 feet down in the middle of Fourth Street. And so the only way to then repair that is to dig up the entire project you did. And again, this is the water conveyance system for the entire downtown that takes all the, all the storm, storm water to Three Mile Creek. I don't know if that answered your question, but it's something that we've been anticipating on the storm and sanitary side.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your presentation. You got questions?
No, I'm just definitely interested to see the, the funding options there. Obviously, concern I have is what that's going to do, you know, any kind of burden it could put on, on us and how it can impact everybody's, you know, still what they're paying in the city and stuff like that. So that's just something.
Yeah, and we're, we are looking forward to presenting, to presenting that too, because I, I think we have worked on this over an amount of time that it won't disrupt projects, won't increase revenue required for anything that we should be able to do through normal revenue sources.
Appreciate it.
And we're going to get the, we're going to get the 5.2 contingency back, right?
If we don't spend it.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, and this really isn't for you or you and the, and the police officer isn't here. Are we going to just, for a year, we're going to have, or more, I guess, than a year, we're going to have just the detours around the, the heart of the city?
That's exactly right. For much of, of 2024, there'll be detours, some detours through Fourth Street.
And do the, the, the store owners in the district?
We've been in most of their basements. So they've been very generous and, you know, we've talked to them. This has had a long lead time also, this project. So I think everybody's aware of, of the depth and destruction. And one thing I'll also mention is there's a potential for some economic development funds, maybe some CVB funds for some of the aesthetic improvements, the landscaping. You know, this isn't, Thornton Street was a conveyance system. So it was really what needed to be done. It's the showpiece of the community. So we don't want to go overboard, but we definitely want, this is the entryway to the downtown. So, so we're certainly trying to do everything we can to make it look like it should.
And we're not looking at closing for Choctaw or Seneca all at once. We're not going to do that whole four-block detour. It's the, we, we close a segment and get that completed and we're going to do the next segment as part of the plan.
Thank you.
Final item on the agenda, solid waste operation discussion, enforcement approach.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, so as we continue on the transition to the hybrid poly cart system brought first by the city commission, then the assembled solid waste task force, we get to item number three, we've done collection approach, the hybrid poly cart new regulations, bulky item pickup, frequency new regulations, and now we come to enforcement approach, warning and citations. So I do want to read the solid waste task force, what they said. They did have a paragraph in their final report, recommend the city should not have ordinances that it cannot or will not enforce. Have city staff prepare a series of warnings and fines for residents who violate ordinances necessary. Recommend enforcement of the 24-hour curbside placement of refuse through resident, the random residential checks by solid waste foreman. Task force also recommends the city commission, look at fine mechanisms in order to provide a warning for the first violation and the ability for the solid waste foreman to issue additional warnings for fines or fines for additional occurrences. So what we took from this is, and from the commission's direction, is we want something that those who violate the program, who contribute to the blight of the community, who continually don't follow through with the rules, that there are consequences. But I have heard through this whole process that we don't want to make this punitive on our residents who maybe make a mistake, or even through the first couple months, three or four, five months. This is, this is about getting compliance, not about punishment. Punishment as a last sort of phase. And I've had conversations with all the commissioners. That's exactly right. So I broke this topic down into three topics, which were warning and education period, enforcement options, and enacting enforcement. So I want to talk first about the warning and education period. Staff would recommend, mainly from feedback from the commission, but also some conversations we've had with some other agencies, a 90 to 120-day education period following the implementation of the program, where it's all, all education. It is, as part of the education, staff would create a variety of stickers to be attached to items or piles that were not in conformance. Stickers would be friendly. They would identify the non-compliance, offer alternative actions. Hey, bulky item pickup is by Friday. Please call this number, you know, to, to take advantage of our free bulky item pickup. Provide a phone number and a web address to access more information. So we want somebody who, who sets out loose items or a mattress or, or stove to realize there are options. They're, they are free and here's how you get ahold of those options. In addition to the information will be provided with the poly carts. We'll have all the information included with those through direct mailers, city social media, website, Channel Two newsletter, and other methods of standard communication that we have with the public. We intend to also use our rental property coordinator. Chuck was, or Chip was here a couple of weeks ago to connect with property owners and explain the rules and requirements of the refuse program. So work with landlords, work with tenants. So work with landlords, work with tenants in that community, information, information, information. So probably, I would say there's no rush on this. I would recommend one hundred and twenty days as people learn the rules, as they work through different seasons, through the fall season and through the Christmas season. And then, and then switch following that, that period. So then we started looking at enforcement options. And for the couple municipalities who do their own refuse, they kind of did it two different ways. They stressed to us education and compliance. As you said, Commissioner Hanguela, and I've talked to the other commissioners, that that's really where you want to put all your energy and effort to start, is education and compliance. And then work with the very few who continually violate going forward. It could be done through a direct referral to municipal court. That's how one entity that we had did. It's a little bit clunky. That requires departments and divisions to speak to each other. It's also time consuming. If it goes to court, then they may have to schedule the court date. The judge puts it on a docket. It could take a while. And then the other thing we looked at is the code enforcement division has its pros and cons. They don't currently issue citations, and a lot of code enforcement officers don't have citation authority. That's a, that's a bigger step, I think. And so here's where, before we get into those options, we can come back to that with your questions. I do want to hit the enacting enforcement. So I think regardless of which direction the commission decides to go on enforcing, equal weight should be given to enacting maybe something ahead of the program so we know what we're doing, or to begin the process to prepare these preferred methods, but hold off on implementation until staff in the governing body has been able to compile more information through the education period. I don't want to create a solution to a problem when we don't know what the problem is. How widespread is it? Where is it? What's the best way to attack this, this problem? If we enact an ordinance and we have to change it, then you, why did you enact it in the first place? So I would recommend that we think about at least not putting anything in place before the program starts. And I know Commissioner Martin and I had this conversation as well. I also think it may send the wrong message that we have the enforcement ready now and we're waiting for you to violate. No, we want, we want to learn what the problem is before we design the specific solution. We can turn an ordinance around pretty quickly. And we can continue to have these discussions at a next study session about if we do get there, what does that look like? But maybe wait through that education period to see specifically what the problem is and what's the best tool to solve it.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Well, and if, if it is an education thing, you know, then we should start to see different, I hate to say violations, but different violations start to be on the downward trend as more people are becoming aware of, you know, what's out there. And we're, the thing for me was like, hey, are we potentially violating civil liberty or something like that? And it's like, well, this is, it's a refuse service that, you know, our citizens are paying for. And this is an updated improvement. And so, you know, we're not really limiting anybody on what they can do, it's just kind of changing up the way it's done. So I think if we can work together, you know, there's gonna be most likely some, you know, repeat offenses out there. But, you know, I think if we can just encourage and keep the communication going on how it works, that, you know, it could take a few months, it could take a little bit of time. But yeah, if we can see that data before we, you know.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be the part is, you know, week one versus week five versus week ten, how many violations are we seeing and what's the nature of them? How are we interacting with those? I do think at the end of the day, we'll have to put something on the books for enforcement. I think that's just gonna be necessary because new people come in and people come out and people some are just chronically push that envelope. And but let's see maybe what that looks like.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, and I think we'll definitely have a better idea closer once we get to the summertime, as things really start to open up. So are, thank you for touching all of those points as well. So are we looking at revisiting this in another one hundred and twenty days?
So what we'll probably do now, if we want to, you know, hold off on implementing anything or drafting an ordinance for review at this point, is we need to do sort of a summary of where we are, of when the rollout date is, when people could start seeing them, what the rules are. So we have from guidance from the commission and the solid waste task force committee, what the bulky item policy looks like, what the poly cart program, you know, the written documents. And so I plan to bring those back to the commission, probably at a March study session and continue. Probably even have another one in April. You know, we just want it out there as much as possible. And then we'll work on a, you know, maybe what a draft enforcement action would look like once we know a little bit more.
Okay, so would we have consensus to wait on putting a policy like that?
You know, we wait on the enforcement until we give people a chance to get used to it. And then, hey, you who don't want to get used to it, they're the ones will be looking at the enforcement action on. Other folks, it's gonna be education.
Yeah, it's not designed to be punitive. It's really designed to clean up the city. And so we don't want to come out, I think, with, we have the stick ready, you know, kind of thing, I think.
If you keep revisiting it a little bit and then people have questions and then, you know, address those and then go forward and just reiterate it.
And you have touched base with Commissioner about her as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
Are we gonna do something to prevent, you know, like instant stick on them? Elderly, disabled, and intellectually challenged folks, you know, they didn't know. And, you know, for some folks, they can't physically get the stuff out there or they can't physically not keep it from going out there because, you know, something got delivered and they took the replacement, the thing to replace it and just threw it out on the, you know, the, on the lawn. We gonna have any kind of a, an allowance to that?
Right, so that would be a lot through that, the original, the stickers and the information that, you know, what is your issue? And it ends up that the refuse workers know their routes and their people pretty well. So I mean, we're talking a lot about common sense.
Case by case, yeah.
That's certainly the idea.
One of the things I would remind, every way that we give out information to educate people, we have to be very, very aware that there's no contradiction between this sticker, that, that sheet. You know, there can't be any contradiction at all. And bottom line, who's responsible? The renter or the landlord?
For a violation, so.
I'm thinking the one who created it, who did the, who committed the violation.
So at the end of the day, with like a code invite, like a code violation, it goes to the property owner. Now, what we do with a code violation, and we could do this too if we ever got into the fine. So our code enforcement officers, they send it to the registered property owner and the address. So both receive it. And then it would be up to the landlord to say, hey, I got this. I know you got it too. And that's between those two, the renter and the landlord directly finding out of the situation.
Yep.
Also, do we have a consensus to revisit this and?
Move forward with the program, continue with the enforcement on that.
How does it look for the, the poly carts to arrive?
We actually finished specs here last week. We hope to have it on the street next week because the March seventh bid open.
That's good.
Still looking for rollout of the summer, so.
Cool.
All right, well, I appreciate that. Well, that concludes our study session. We'll go around the table to see if anyone have any comments before we close out. Start with Paul.
Hey, you. So Leavenworth County Council on Aging and Kansas State Research and Extension Office invite you to the ribbon cutting and open house at the new location. It's February fifteenth, two to seven, and that's at seven eleven Marshall Street, Street Suites one hundred and one hundred and one. It's the old Cushing Building. So really excited, and if you guys can make it, it's a, the transformation is, you know, is really cool. And also, I just want to say, go Chiefs. That's it, that's, have a good.
Man, oh, there's some red. There's some sort of red.
Go Chiefs!
I thought about that when I came here tonight. I was like, we should probably wear Chiefs shirts.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Martin?
Yeah, Mr. Fass, one, one thing, when you're getting, you said you're gonna open the bids in another few weeks on the. Everything I've been hearing so far, seems like the resin market's been kind of getting soft. So if you're getting any numbers back from anybody from, that you did from like last year to kind of get initial, if they're the same prices, I would, my thought is push back a little bit and say, hey, you know, they, they went some direction, so if we can, you know, push back to keep the cost down more. But anyway, yes, go Chiefs.
How many do we expect? How many bidders do we expect?
We expect two, two, two companies have definitely expressed interest and they, they know that the other is interested. And so there'll be.
Up anymore.
Yeah, never a bad, never a bad thing. Yeah, yeah. Cool, thank you.
I just want to give a special shout out to the city and all who participated in the daddy daughter dance. It was amazing. It was great to see them fathers dance with their daughters. It's beautiful. Make your heart cry on the inside and tears flow on the outside. It was beautiful overall. And then just really want to say a special prayer for all the students at the Leavenworth High School. There's some things that is going around and just ask that you just keep all families in prayer and the students at the high school. That conclude our city commission meeting. Thank you.